Now I'd like to call this meeting of the Coventry Town Council to order at 6:33 PM. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Here.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Here.
Councilmember Shockley?
Here.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Here.
President Lima?
Here. Uh, Councilmember Shockley, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Emergency evacuation procedures this evening, uh, you can exit out the same doors that you came in, exit either to the back parking lot, to your left, uh, my left, your right, or out to the front lawn to, uh, 117. Moving on next to meeting minutes from prior meetings, um, I will just put the caveat here. If you have amendments for executive session, uh, please submit those in memorandum to the clerk. Um, and then we can have future consideration, um, during, during a, um, an incoming meeting if you had just specific edits. And be careful not to discuss these in public session. Um, at this time, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to approve these as a block.
I'll make the motion.
I actually have one change. Um, so I'd gladly approve them as a block, but with the one change.
Yep, we'll just, we'll discuss amendments.
Then I'll second it.
Motion by, uh, Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilmember Shockley, discussion. Councilmember Shockley?
Um, I'm not sure what was intended. Um, it's November fourteenth, line three thirty-two on page thirty-two of the agenda. Um, it says Beta Group is twenty thousand hours short to complete the project. I think dollars is what we were looking for, um, but I'm not positive.
Okay.
So that's the one change, just twenty thousand hours to twenty thousand dollars.
Any further discussion from members of the council? Madam Clerk, did you receive any corrections from council members?
Uh, just a few that I received from you.
Have they been made?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, last call, any further discussion on the minutes for November fourteenth, December twelfth, January tenth, executive and public session, January seventeenth, executive and public session, January twenty-fourth, executive session, February eighth, February thirteenth, executive and public session, February twenty-second. Uh, Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilmember Shockley. Any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes. Moving on to public acknowledgements and commendations, item A, uh, Women's History Month. Whereas in March, we celebrate Women's History Month and honor the contributions of women in America, American history, despite hardship, discrimination, and exclusion. And whereas we also celebrate more than two hundred years of women bravely serving in the US military. Today, more than two hundred thousand women represent sixteen percent of our nation's armed forces, and we honor more than two million women veterans. And whereas while we honor the contributions of women throughout American history, wage and opportunity gaps continue to exist. Women earn eighty-four cents for every dollar earned by a man, more than four hundred thousand dollars less over her forty-year career. And women of color even earn even less. Women are less likely to have professional and technical jobs or hold leadership positions. And women spend more time than men performing unpaid household work and providing child and elder care. And whereas at the current pace, women are not expected to reach pay parity until 2059. Efforts to close wage and opportunity gaps must address the systemic barriers to fill, to full participation in the multitude of biases that hold women, particularly women of color, LGBTQIA+ women, and women with other diverse identities in their families back. And whereas Rhode Island has been home to some of the most prominent influential women of the last century, including National Women's Party founder and women's suffrage advocacy leader Alva Vanderbilt Belmont, cultural preservationist Squaw Princess Redwing, labor advocate Margaret Ackroyd, the first woman to ever play baseball, Lizzie Murphy, first African-American to sing at Carnegie Hall, Matilda Sisaretta Joyner-Jones, first African-American to serve as a First Circuit federal judge, O. Roger E. Thompson, just to name a few. And whereas despite relentless obstacles, women make up a majority of members on the Coventry Town Council, as well as the senior leadership position of president. Additionally, women answer the call for public service in the community, serving and sharing on Coventry's boards, committees, and commissions, and as directors and staff members within the town of Coventry. Whereas the two thousand twenty-three theme for Women's History Month is celebrating women who tell our stories. This theme recognizes women past and present who have been active in all forms of media and storytelling, including print, radio, TV, stage, screen, blogs, podcasts, news, and social media. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Hillary Lima, Council President of the Town of Coventry, confirms that Coventry Town Council declares March twenty twenty-three as Women's History Month in the Town of Coventry, and encourage our community to observe and celebrate trailblazing women, past and present, and take action now to reverse continued inequities and ensure gender equality for future generations of girls. In testimony whereof and on behalf of the Honorable Town Council, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be fixed this fourteenth day of March. Any discussion for members of the Town Council? Councilor Ludwig?
So thank you so much to the council for allowing this to come forward. I'm very excited for Coventry. Um, we have a lot of really amazing women in this town doing wonderful things. So thank you to the community and President Lima and the council for your support. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, um, I'd love next to move on to item B, May I Show I Care? Um, could I have, uh, members of the James family come forward? Welcome. You just want to introduce yourselves for us? You just turn on the mic up there, just flip it, flip the switch.
Hi, my name is Joy James, and this is my son Ethan Diggs.
Welcome. Um, so I had, um, I'm sure many of you saw on Facebook, um, the, the James family, uh, they run a charity organization locally called May I Show I Care? Um, and they regularly support Coventry residents in the community. Uh, most recently, they made a really big donation to the Coventry Food Bank. And also, as you'll hear in the certificate, um, we have Ethan in our community, a District Two resident, who's a little bit of a superstar and a leader in his own right. Um, and he's just in the fourth grade?
Yes.
Fourth grade, so I'll read the recognition. Certificate of recognition, the Town, Town Council of the Town of Coventry hereby extends its sincerest gratitude to May I Show I Care for their selfless service to the Coventry community with regular donations to the Coventry Food Bank. The Town Council extends special thanks to, to Ethan James, age ten, who with his family regularly helped those in need through their organization despite the personal adversity he has faced and continues to face after being diagnosed with sickle cell disease just a week after he was born. For his courage and resolve in overcoming his medical challenge, Ethan was recently named a champion child by Hasbro Children's Hospital. As the champion child, Ethan will spend the next year as a pediatric ambassador highlighting the hospital's work and the importance of donated funds for research and treatment. Be it resolved, the Honorable Coventry Town Council sends its best wishes and gratitude to the James family and Ethan as they continue their service to our town and those in need at large. In testimony whereof and on behalf of the Honorable Coventry Town Council, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed this fourteenth day of March. Thank you.
Come on up. Thank you.
Moving on to item three, public hearings and public comment on docketed items only. Uh, do we have anyone in the public here at council chambers for public comment on docketed items only? Please come forward and, uh, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Stephen Bosque from Eight Raven Boulevard, uh, in, uh, Coventry. And I was just, I know when the docketed item, we've had it on the agenda before, it's coming back up again, was the Alfred Distribution to the fire districts. At that meeting, I did pass out a paper where, um, I had mentioned the description, I believe, is correct on cost of funding, but the numbers in the resolution don't match the description. And I sent out a formula as far as what, you know, the percentage should look like. And not knowing if that goes forward, so I'm just restating the same thing essentially, just so that it's still into consideration as far as what the payout amounts are.
So the reason that that resolution appears the same in the agenda this evening is because there were no amendments formally passed by this council when this was last heard on, I believe, January twenty-fourth. So that conversation will have to get restarted and there'll have to be formal.
And I figured that, but I just wanted to cover any, any other thoughts.
Poor thing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public, uh, for, with public comment on docketed items? Any members of the public on Zoom? Going once? Going twice? Three times, public comment on docketed items is now closed. Moving on to public hearings. Item A, petition for zone change from R twenty residential half acre to general business, AP thirty-two, Lot seventy-eight, Zone R twenty, ninety-six Tyoq Avenue. Owner Joanne A. Plant, applicant John Vikkevich. Uh, the public hearing is still open as this was a continuance.
Thank you, Madam President. And thanks to the Coventry Town Council for hearing this. If you'd just indulge me for a moment. We did all the pre-application stuff that we were required to do. We did the planning vote on nine twenty-eight, and they voted eight to nothing. It was a procedural issue that we had to come back on, it's, uh, ten twenty-six, and we did it again, and it was eight to one. On twelve twelve, we had a hearing, the public got up and spoke, or the abuders got up and, uh, they objected. And I don't think Council President was here that evening. And it was the council that continued it to the January meeting. I did request the January continuance because we were still working on the two banks that were interested in this property, one of them is still interested in the property. Um, I came back on the twenty-fourth and knew granted to be an extension to tonight because the bottom line is there was an attorney that was going to get involved. He still may get involved, but we're going to end this tonight. I'd like to just, for the record, if possible, have any of the abuders get up and just tell the council why they don't want this. And that's it, you're going to vote on it, we're going to go home tonight, and tomorrow's a different day. But please not too snowy. That's all, you know, this is just, we had a plan to do affordable housing there before the commercial came up. When the commercial came up, it looked like a better plan for that particular lot, the highest investment use. And it was also, I, I want to estimate four, maybe five hundred feet from the abuders behind. There is no access from this lot to the abuders in Hibiscus. All right, so I didn't think in a low-impact bank, I didn't think it was going to be a bad thing for that location. And they do like that location, as I said, one of the banks is still interested. But right now, we're just going to have the, if the abuders want to get up and speak, that's great. We preserve it for the record. The attorney will, will review it and decide what he wants to do. I'm going forward with the housing that was recommended by one of the abuders. If we don't, if we don't see a commercial or a general business. There is a half step two, you want to do a commer, a conditional commercial. All right, a conditional commercial says, yeah, we'll let you go general business, but you have to identify the, the, the use, the actual use. I realize that coming to you asking for general business is very wide. However, there are other controls in your zoning that says if this is going in there, it may need a special use. That use may come back in front of you again. I am not here in any way, shape, or form to diminish the property values of anybody on Tyoq Avenue, on Oriole, or on Hibiscus. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Any members of the public, uh, like to speak on this item? Uh, just state your name and address for the record.
Gina Dove, fifty-seven Hibiscus. So we are directly behind the property in question. And it was just the not knowing what was going to go there. No, we don't want to bank there with drive-through twenty-four-seven with our backyard right there. It was just the not knowing, and we never mentioned housing. I'm not sure where that's coming from. Personally, we would just like to see it put on the market tomorrow, sold as, I think it's a two-bed, one-bath, and have some wonderful new neighbors. That's it.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Frank Comodale, fifty-one Hibiscus Lane, Coventry. I just don't see the point, I mean, those changes, so it's a conversion, there's, there's a shortage of affordable houses for people. There's plenty of empty buildings for banks and stuff like that, and I don't, and the owner of this property, she moved already. I don't see, she's not trying to open up a flower shop or something. You know what I mean, it's just someone trying to get more money for the property, that's the way I see it.
Thank you very much. Um, any additional comments? Can you just ensure the mic is on before you state your name and address? It should be flicked up.
Yeah, that's on.
Yeah.
Kevin Chamberlain, fifty-five Hibiscus. Uh, I also, you know, don't want a business there, we're, it's zoned residential, there's no businesses on that side of the street. And, um, you know, I believe we should remain residential. We're, we're staying in the community, the owner is leaving. So we would hope that you would weigh our opinion, uh, as neighbors higher than those that are leaving the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public here in council chambers? Any members of the public on Zoom for this public hearing item? Hearing none, uh, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Oh, I apologize. Can I hear what the actual vote is? Great, yes.
Uh, Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
That's five in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
At this time, um, if the council, uh, has any discussion on the item? Or if there's a motion on the floor? Vice President LeBlanc?
Uh, I make a motion to reject the zone change.
We have a motion to reject the zone change by Vice President LeBlanc?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Shockley, any discussion? Councilmember Shockley?
Um, I just wanted to reiterate from the past meetings that we've had on this. Um, in the short time I've been on the council, um, some of the biggest issues I have are where residential and commercial abut too closely. Um, in one, and in most instances, what the business is currently being used for is not what it was being used for at the time that the change was made. Um, so in my time on council, I've seen more problems with this kind of zoning change than solutions. If it was currently zoned commercial, I probably vote not to change that either. Um, it's, but it's currently zoned residential, and I feel like with the neighbors, while commercial might be more lucrative, I think residential is also an appropriate use of the property.
Council Ludwig?
This feels a bit like spot zoning, which we've been heavily warned against by, uh, Director Durfee. Um, I did go and speak with residents, uh, surrounding the location. Uh, I do respect personal property rights, but in this case, felt that the, um, the change to a commercial zone lies with the council and not with the individual. So I'm going to be voting against it tonight, or, or in favor of the rejection.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
That's five in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Moving on to item five, election and/or appointment of town officials. Uh, item A, Town Council appointments. We have one opening on the Coventry Land Trust, one opening on the Library Board of Trustees. Uh, the, the term expires May first, twenty twenty-three, so coming up soon. Uh, an unexpired term, I should say, and then the juvenile hearing board, we have one opening. Uh, as you saw, with a communication from the clerk potentially, too, we have a gentleman who hasn't shown up to a meeting in two years. So, uh, we'll start conversation on the Coventry Land Trust. The clerk put in front of you, um, a list of, um, applicant, recent applicants in the last, uh, six months. Um, we've interviewed many people, um, and we haven't necessarily made appointments. So we just wanted to make this available to you so you're aware. Um, so you can see there, we've had two applicants for the land trust in the last, uh, six months. We have interviewed, uh, both of these people before. Mr. Angel, I just want to confirm, we, we had one name on the agenda under the land trust, but are we allowed to appoint? That was just for consideration, are we allowed to point someone we've interviewed? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So we are allowed to consider names that are on this list that may not be on the agenda. Council Ludwig?
So, um, I had spoken with Mr. Um, Robert Brennan. Um, and he came to the council, obviously, back in November. Um, so originally, when that application, um, was submitted, um, he, he had mentioned that, and this is a little bit more of a refresher, so he had mentioned he was open to a few general items. So just for consideration, um, uh, Mr. Brennan, uh, was a very active member of the Charter Review Commission last year. Uh, his wife is currently on this commission, they're very sorry, I don't know if that was me, they're very, very active in the community, um, with the town. Um, and I see a high participa, participation rate coming from them. Um, he was also open to other possible positions as well. But we hadn't actually gone into those specifically. I know he's been patient, I know he's raised his hand before, I've asked him to raise his hand, and he has. So I just wanted that, um, considered here for either tonight or for a future appointment for Mr. Brennan.
Councilmember Shockley?
Um, I think we're lucky tonight that we have two very good candidates for the position. I, I feel like Mr. Brennan, when we nominated someone for this last time, mentioned that he had other committees that he would be interested in. Melissa has raised her hand, um, and I think based on current things going on in the town, chose this commission. But because of the, um, item that she chose it for, I think would be a really strong candidate to be able to um, kind of look how this commission impacts different neighborhoods and different parts of Coventry. Um, so I think that if Melissa was able to enter the town politics in this way, I think it would be really positive for Coventry as well.
Any further discussion on Coventry Land Trust? Yeah, do I, if there's a motion on the floor?
Uh, I was going to make a motion for Melissa Jones to be the newest applicant for the Coventry Land Trust. I'll second it.
It's, can you just amend your motion to appointment, just not applicant?
Appointment.
Motion to appoint. Uh, motion to appoint Melissa Jones to the Coventry Land Trust by Councilmember Shockley, second by Vice President LeBlanc, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
I've seen.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one abstention.
Moving on to the Library Board of Trustees, we have an unexpired term due to resignation expiring on May first, twenty twenty-three. We had, uh, one application submitted from a Mr. Jason Farber. And we did, I, did we interview this person, Joanne? We have not. And you said they couldn't make it tonight?
Correct.
Okay.
I reached out to reschedule on March twenty-eighth.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, uh, continue this, um, uh, appointment to, uh, the March twenty-eighth agenda?
Oh, I'll second it.
I guess I'll make it and she's okay.
Motion by, uh, Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilmember Shockley, any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Moving on to C, Juvenile Hearing Board, we have one opening. Um, all candidates that are listed here on the agenda have been interviewed. Um, uh, Madam Clerk, can you just, uh, remind us in terms of, I believe, some of these candidates you haven't heard from? In terms of being available? I think you sent an email today.
So Earl Reed was interviewed on twelve twelve. Um, I, Stephen Mann was working, so he was not able to attend. Um, I, Stephen Mann was working, so he was not able to attend. And I didn't receive a response from Andrew Para.
And can you just remind us of the name you have for the person who hasn't showed up to a meeting in two years?
Mark. Mark Monahan. I was notified by Detective Rick Pandola.
Right.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint, um, Earl Reed to the juvenile hearing board.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc? Second by Councilman Pasqua. Discussion? Councilman Pasqua?
I spoke to two of these candidates. They were still interested, but, um, I remember the interview with Earl Reed and he's a great candidate. And I'm grateful that we have three other candidates, two other candidates to be a good choice this year. I think, uh, Mr. Reed is hands down the, the one for the job here. So I'm going to be supporting him.
Thank you. Any further discussion from members of the council? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Mr. Angel, um, when it comes to removing someone from a committee, does that lie with the chair of that committee or this council? Um, so members of the council, um, we have someone who hasn't gone to a meeting in two years. If there is a motion to, uh, remove that person, um, we could consider another appointment this evening. Uh, Vice President LeBlanc?
Uh, just a question for solicitor, since it's not on the agenda for us to, uh, speak to, nor has this person been, uh, at least an attempt made to notify that person. Uh, I would just ask the question, um, should we be actually making that motion this evening?
Yeah, the agenda, I, the agenda item is for election indoor appointments, not for removal. My suggestion would be, uh, that the council vote on to have the president under, over her signature, um, through the clerk, send a letter to this gentleman and have him appear at the next council meeting to give cause as to why he has or has not come to a meeting, uh, in two years. That being the case, if he shows or doesn't show, the council can do what it needs to do at that time to remove and make the appointment of someone else.
Councilman Pasqua?
So being that we would have to notify this person, they come in and, uh, we determine what is going on. The appointment that we're making tonight does, is it on hold? Because there's a set amount of people.
There's technically, this, this is for one opening that already exists.
Okay.
We're saying there's a potential second opening because of this gentleman.
Very good. Perfect.
Do I hear a motion on the floor to, uh, send a notification to, uh, Mark Monahan? Uh, regarding, uh, this position? A motion by Vice President LeBlanc?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Shockley. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Moving on to, uh, report of the town manager, um, Mr. Robillard? Any updates this evening?
Um, first I wanted to thank, uh, the council. We've done a lot of work in the last couple of weeks and, uh, I appreciate our communication. Um, a lot of the focus over the, uh, the time that I've been interim is obviously day-to-day operations. Um, our focus presently has been on the budget development. I've met with all department heads in regards to their, their budgets and worked very closely with our finance director, Mr. Suvetti. Um, and we're continuing to, you know, get those, uh, budgets completed and maintain our timeline within the budget calendar. And, um, that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the interim town manager? Moving on to a report of other town officers and officials, update of Robert Suvetti, CPA, interim finance director. Mr. Suvetti?
Good evening. Again, at this point, we're moving forward. We're making great progress in getting the financial records updated. As the town manager just mentioned, uh, we've been focusing a lot on budgets and trying to get that information so that you have it in your hands by weekend so that we can start the workshops next week. As far as like the, um, opera funding, I did receive, you know, what that was provided by the council president as well as information that the previous interim town manager had left. And we're going through that to try to capture and make sure everything's included. What I'm doing internally from a general ledger standpoint, we're creating a separate special revenue fund. We're all active, that activity is going to be accounted for. So it's a lot easier to just extract the information. Right now it's a matter of trying to go through, uh, the town clerk's been very helpful in trying to provide some of the resolutions of items that were approved, but then still trying to connect the dots on, you know, there's been some discussion internally with the assistant town manager that a couple of things that we've coded as opera, but it doesn't look like they were supposed to be opera. Um, they haven't been reported. They just internally, they were coded in that manner. So still trying to pull all that information together. But I think the report that the, uh, Ed, the former interim town manager had provided, you know, that, that as well as what the council president provided, we're using as our basis. And again, just trying to move everything so that when you need a report, it's just easy to extract bun number XYZ. It's going to have the total revenue to date, the total expenditures, but, um, the revenue that was reported on the report of the previous town manager is.
Pretty close stacker. Okay. Anything else? Uh, Councilwoman Shockley?
Hi, uh, thank you. Uh, really appreciate the work that you've been doing. And I'm just wondering, because we have an agenda item tonight, um, concerning spending some of those ARPA funds. And in previous meetings, it's been discussed that until we get to a certain place, you know, people didn't want to start allocating those funds. So do you feel we're at that place?
Well, I think with the ARPA funding themselves, it really is not affecting the day-to-day operations. So you had a certain dollar amount of ARPA funds in excess of nine million, um, that the town received, you've allocated a small amount of that. So I think those funds are available to allocate out of the ARPA funds. You know, in accordance with what you have on tonight's resolution, I think would be, yeah. I don't want to say appropriate, but those funds are available. Um, yes, are there more projects that can be done in town?
Oh, no, no.
To utilize those funds, certainly, but I think we can, we can earmark the money that you had this evening and that wouldn't be a problem. That's maintained in a separate account. We could disperse those funds. We don't have any issue.
Thank you. I think too, the concern was when you first came in, in the beginning of January was figuring out where all the money was all across the different accounts and seeing that we were, we were in a good financial place, cash flow was good, et cetera. So, and I think Mr. Suvetti's kind of alleviated those concerns, so.
And cat, cash flow is at this point getting tight, but you know, we do have a collection coming up. We're just getting through a collection, uh, last month. But looking with, uh, working with the tax collector, seeing what we have expected to come in the next couple of months. We should be fine and we are in the process of, um, looking at some of the additional bank accounts. I met with folks at Webster Bank account last week and still scratching our head as to why we have, I think the last count was about 330 bank accounts just at Webster Bank. And the person I met with there had no clue why that many were open with, they connected us to somebody at the corporate office and so we're still working with that and will be at some point consolidating that into one account rather than 325.
Councilwoman Shockley?
Just to go back to that, are, are these a lot of new accounts or are just, we've accumulated accounts over time?
Relatively new. It looks like what the previous person in the finance position did was they, every time an impact fee was received, they created a new bank account. Um, as you know, impact fees from developments, contractors, you know, new house, homes, et cetera. That money comes in, it is restricted for certain purposes, but there's no restriction that you put it in a separate bank account. So we, every time a new project came in, if you could collect at a $5, uh, $5,000 impact fee, it went into its own account. And that's what these consist of. Whereas my experience with, you know, communities throughout the state, you have one general cash account. And internally we maintain record of where those funds came from. So what plot and lot it's related to or what development it's related to. And we work off of that. You definitely don't create a separate bank account for every time you collect the impact fee.
Any further discussion from members of the council for the interim finance director? Hearing none, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, moving on, um, update of Stephen J. Angel Esquire, town solicitor. Any updates this evening?
Is just one, as a point of clarification, the clerk received, um, a letter, um, from an attorney, Robert Flaherty, concerning a show cause hearing. Mr. Flaherty, um, was informed through his client that that hearing would be occurring, that show cause hearing on the Calvin Town Kennels and, uh, Philip Van Kugan would be occurring on April 25th. Why he sent the letter, um, specifically targeted for tonight, I don't know, but I just wanted to clear that up for the council. If it was forwarded up to you by the clerk, the reason for the delay, um, has to do, uh, with vacation schedules for some of the witnesses at that hearing. We do expect, um, Detective Pandola to testify. We do expect, um, the animal control officer to testify as well as, um, the deputy chief of state veterinary medicine to testify as well. So that's the delay in coordinating those folks. Um, and that's the update.
Any discussion from members of the council on this solicitor's report? Hearing none, uh, moving on to item eight, resolutions of the council. Uh, item A, resolution 2023-16, support of FY24 proposed infrastructure funds. This is on page 119 of your packet. I'll read the resolution. Whereas in the town of Coventry, municipalities have seen an influx of federal aid to support our economic recovery from COVID-19. Those funds are intended to support our communities through the new challenges they are facing. And federal stimulus funds have allowed communities to make progress, but are far short of the investments needed to accommodate a new influx of housing. And as the state looks to increase housing stock, cities and towns will need infrastructure to respond to population growth. And in FY22 and FY2023, approximately 3.5 million was allocated to the municipal infrastructure grant program for the first time since the program was established in 2017. And in the first round of funding proposals, 17 municipalities requested almost eight and a half million dollars from this program across 24 project proposals. And many communities are interested in securing infrastructure investment and jobs act I IJA funds, but are lacking matching funds to be seen as competitive nationally. Now therefore be it resolved that the Honorable Town Council encourages the General Assembly to approve FY2024 proposed municipal roads program for 20 million so cities and towns can complete road sidewalk and bridge projects. And two, strongly considers encourages the General Assembly to identify an annual source of funding for the municipal roads program similar to Massachusetts Chapter 90 program. Three, strongly encourages the General Assembly to approve the FY2024 proposed municipal infrastructure matching pool for five and a half million to support municipalities applying for I IJA funds, but lack local, local matching funds. And four, strongly encourages the General Assembly to support municipal infrastructure and resilience projects by allocating 30 million to the municipal infrastructure grant program for two years as it is critical to expanding the housing stock across the state. Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion by Councilman Pasqua?
I'll second it.
Second by Vice President LeBlanc. Discussion? Um, so I, I brought this resolution forward. Um, this is a resolution that was distributed for consideration for support by the Round League of Cities and Towns. So, uh, member municipalities are encouraged to support this. I think the resolution kind of speaks for itself. It's basically asking the General Assembly to make an investment in programs that, uh, support municipalities for infrastructure improvements, roads, bridges, sidewalks, et cetera. The Chapter 90 program that they refer to, item two at the bottom of the resolution in Massachusetts, basically how Massachusetts does it on a very simple level is those communities that make investments in their road and, and local bridge and sidewalk infrastructure. Um, the, the state of Massachusetts gives a percentage matched to communities. So basically they reward communities for investing in their roads and bridges. And so this, this program's been, um, advocated for before to the Round General Assembly and this is just again advocating for it. Uh, Vice President LeBlanc?
Um, my only suggestion is if this resolution gets approved, that we send it to, um, the Coventry delegation?
Absolutely. Um, Councilwoman Shockley?
Um, I just wanted to ask that if this gets approved, that we, um, look more closely at how we want to spend our ARPA funds on our roads, um, to make sure that if this is approved and we're able to, have any match available that may be necessary under some of these programs.
Councilwoman Pasqua?
This is, uh, kind of common sense legislation and, uh, our neighboring states actually already do this. So, uh, this is long overdue and I, and I hope it, uh, I hope it goes through the General Assembly successfully. So I, uh, I'm in full support of this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Madam Clerk, could you, um, remit a signed copy of this resolution to the Coventry, uh, General Assembly delegation, please? Thank you. Moving on to item B, resolution 2023-17, support of housing development and land use. I'll now read the resolution. Whereas in the town of Coventry, housing continues to be a priority at all levels of government in Rhode Island. Municipal leaders stand together and welcoming the development of responsible housing in our communities and are interested in working with stakeholders across the state to improve housing opportunities for Islanders. And local leaders agree zoning and land use should remain a local decision. And as members of the Round League of Cities and Towns, we support the establishment of both the land use and low and moderate income housing study commissions to identify ways to help cities and towns meet their obligations under the Low and Moderate Income Housing Act to ensure that at least 10% of their housing stock qualifies as affordable. And there have been challenges with implementing cha- changes to state law that were approved in the last legislative session. Now therefore be it resolved that the Honorable Town Council strongly encourages the state to work with cities and towns to encourage housing construction and rehabilitation and remove barriers to housing such as infrastructure improvements. And be it further resolved to accomplish our housing goals, municipalities need the following. A clear menu of innovative solutions and funding opportunities from the state that can be implemented during the winter season. Increased funding for infrastructure improvements and remediation outside of federal aid opportunities to preserve and promote quality of life based on the different communities' needs and respect the local voice and land use decisions. Funding the implementation of programs and systems to support process improvements. Increased technical support and adequate funding to departments and agencies that facilitate housing growth, including the Division of Statewide Planning and Department of Housing. Workforce development to expand the pool of municipal planners and building and zoning officials. Adequate state and education aid to support the needs of residents. A commitment to expanding reliable transportation opportunities for residents. Extending the urban service boundary and be it further resolved, both commissions ensure that they will listen to municipal leaders regarding these meaningful policy changes so they can be implemented and enforced at the local level. And be it further resolved that the Coventry Town Council, the town of Coventry supports the housing and land use needs identified by the Round League of Cities and Towns referenced above and passes a resolution of the Town of Coventry Town Council this 14th day of March, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc? Second by Councilman Pasqua? Again, um, this is another resolution, uh, provided to us and encouraged, uh, by the Round League of Cities and Towns. Um, this is in direct correlation to the conversation started by Senator Gordon Rogers, who spoke with us at our last meeting on February 21st. What this resolution says is, um, at it, at its core, um, we, yes, we will work with the state and we will be a collaborator, um, in terms of the future of affordable housing and land use development. But we would like to see, as you can see in the bullets, these pieces come together to, to empower us and enable communities to be good supporters and keep local decision-making at the, at the town level. Any discussion from members of the council? Councilman Pasqua?
Thank you. I, uh, I agree that I'm going to support this because, uh, one of the, one of the key points for me is something like constituents reached out to me with concern that some of the legislation that was being put out by the state was going to negate our zoning laws and basically allow for development anywhere, especially in Western Coventry. That's a deep concern. Uh, given that most of Western Coventry's an RR5. So, uh, this actually doesn't, uh, go around our zoning. It still leaves decision-making to us. So because of that, I'll, I'll support this.
Councilwoman Shockley?
I support it as well. I just have the same concerns I've always had when, um, thinking of putting new housing into Coventry. We can't grow our base. We're not allowed to increase our budget when new people move in and start paying taxes um, on either a new house or a house at a different, um, level. I have concerns where we're building more and more housing developments, where we're not offering our town services to people, but we're still telling them to pay taxes for those town services. Whereas part of the deal, the garbage doesn't come and get picked up. Your roads don't get plowed. And yet, like I said, every resident gets charged the same taxes without receiving any of the services. So I think a lot has to be done to make it so that towns can continue to improve as they increase the amount of housing that they have and they don't start taking services away from the newer people moving into our community.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Um, to that end, Councilmember Shockley, um, basically what it comes down to is this is pretty much a hallmark issue for, uh, Speaker Shakarchi in the House. Um, and the long story short is if community is, as I understand it from speaking with the league, if communities in Rhode Island don't start coming to the table and doing some low hanging fruit items to show that we would, we're collaborating on housing and affordable housing and land use development, then the next step is we will get stomped over. Um, so, you know, um, we need to show, make an effort and show that we're a community that's willing to come to the table and be a part of the conversation. Um, and we, we can't continue to just put on horse blinders to this issue. We, we're, we have to come to the table and we have to show we're willing to, um, to, uh, support the initiative. Uh, responsibly, of course. Um, I know that we have our planning director, Mister Durfee here. He's been attending workshops, um, and webinars and other legislative updates. With the, uh, local association of municipal planners. Um, the league also had a legislative update on this last week. So I know that we have town staff that are in the loop on following this legislation as well. Councilor Ludwig.
Um, I just had a question about, um, I don't know if you were able to enact with, um, Gordon, um, Senator Rogers on any of these points. Um, I had a coughing fit, so I had to walk out at the last time, so I'm sorry. Um, is there, is there anything we, um, is there anything that is being asked for that we're not including?
No, so the way I understood it from when I spoke with, uh, Senator Rogers was his coalition started and his talking points started. Um, and then, uh, the league executive director met with him and that's when this was created. So I know that it was created with his own opinions in mind. Um, so I know that there's been friction in the past with the smaller rural communities, not feeling like the league necessarily supports them. But I know in this instance, they feel like there's better collaboration this year, especially if something as important as this. Councilmember Shockley.
Um, and just to go to what, something you said before, I don't know if anyone has the date and time on them, but based on the fact that zoning and land use should remain a local decision according to what we're asking for here, um, there is another meeting soon on the comprehensive plan that resident input is going to be asked for. And I think this is a more important time than ever to have a up to date, strong comprehensive plan. So if people are looking to give that input, um, next week, I don't remember the date and time.
Twenty first, Tuesday.
So March twenty first, people, if you can work that into your schedule to be part of that meeting. Um, I believe you can go virtually. And, um, I will share that again on social media just so that people can be aware and put it in their calendar.
That's a great point. Um, I've been told that with all the new legislation circulating, the fact that we're about to have our comprehensive plan done is a huge checkmark for our community when it comes to this. Um, and those who are just getting started with revising theirs or updating theirs are going to be really behind the eight ball. Um, so it's good that we have that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Clerk please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Uh, moving on to Item C, um, does everyone else have this in their packet? I don't have this resolution in my packet. Oh, I see it. That's my bad. Uh, Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Three Dash Eighteen, uh, Support Change, uh, Tax Collection, General Law. Whereas in the town of Coventry, the Coventry Tax Collector is recommending that the Town Council support and request an amendment to the Round General Laws that promotes a more efficient and effective way to enforce tax liens concerning mobile and or manufactured homes in the town of Coventry. And the Coventry Tax Collector is recommending a specific change to Rhode Island general laws as follows. Section forty four dash seven dash twenty eight Gloucester, Coventry and Burrville Tax Lean on Mobile or Manufactured Home in the Town. A, taxes assessed against any person in the towns of Gloucester, Coventry and Burrville for either a mobile or manufactured home shall continue to constitute a lean on the mobile or manufactured home. The lean shall arise and attaches the date of the date of assessment of the taxes is defined in section forty four dash five dash one. B, the lean shall terminate in the, at the expiration of twenty years. The lean shall be superior to any other lean encumbrance or interest in the mobile or manufactured home, whether by way or attachment or of attachment or otherwise. C, the taxes may be collected and the lean may be enforced in the same manner in which taxes are collected and the lean is enforced against real estate for the collection of real estate taxes by municipalities in accordance with Title Forty Four, Chapter Nine, Tax Sales, with no additional fees, charges, assessments or penalties other than those provided for in Chapter Nine of Title Forty Four. And the Town Council endorses and supports the legislative amendment as aforementioned. Now therefore be it resolved that the Honorable Town Council, one, endorses legislative action by the General Assembly to amend Rhode Island General Law Section Forty Four Dash Seven Dash Twenty Eight as stated herein. And two, this resolution shall take effect upon passage and the town clerk is directed to certify the same and transmit it to the Speaker of the House, Senate President, Governor and all state senators and representatives representing Coventry. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Make that motion.
Motion by Councilman Pasqua?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Shockley. Discussion, um, do we have any member of town staff who can speak to this? Provide some information?
So briefly, what we're just looking to do is basically have the same control or ability to enforce the collection of taxes that we do on homes, what's the mobile? You know, currently right now, there's restrictions on how we have, how we can go after that. But if we're able to have tax sales on these mobile homes, treating them just as we would residential property, it just helps us have the ability to collect the taxes which are being assessed currently. If they're treated as motor vehicles or tangible property, we don't have that ability to do the collections through tax sales. That's my understanding what we're looking to do.
Uh, discussion from members of the council? Councilmember Shockley?
So do most other towns do it in the way we're resolving to make change?
I'd have to look. I, again, I think the, the main purpose of it is because of the number of mobile home parks that you have here in Coventry as well as those other different communities, that's why we're looking to have that ability and.
Yeah, I also wonder, so I have two questions. One, is there an issue if they're on, um, leased land as opposed to being on a piece of property they own, they're a residential home on a leased piece of property? Um, and then my other question becomes unlike homes, typically a manufactured home does decrease in value more like an automobile. Um, so I wonder if that's a part of the reason as well. Um, I want to be able to collect the taxes. I just want to, these are questions that come to mind.
Again, as far as the assessment and evaluation of the properties, I can't really speak to that, but it's more the ability to collect. But where it's sitting on leased property or rented property, again, we'd be placing the lean on the home itself, not on the property. But it's, it's, so it just gives us that ability, my understanding and speaking with, uh, tax collector, you know, having that ability, if they have mortgages on the property, that it gives us that ability where if you, you know, if it's going to be going to tax sale, you're more likely that you're going to have the, the bank coming forward or even the property owner, you know, looking to do something because they don't want to keep a, uh, a mobile home on their leased pro- on their land if it's deteriorating or, you know, they're having troubles with. So again, I think the main focus is just to try to ma- make sure we can still have the enforceability of collecting taxes.
Councilman Pasqua?
This makes sense to me. I mean, some of the mobile homes can, uh, can approach the value of single family homes. And, uh, they should, you should have the same tools to collect past due taxes on those as you would anything else. It's only fair to the everybody else who has to pay taxes. Uh, so really the change that you're looking to make is the ability to put a lean on a title versus a deed is how I understand it, right? Because there's no, there's no deed on a manufactured home, it's a title. So you're just looking to make that change. So that to me is, makes sense.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Uh, I just have a question. Um, on Row Thirty One, it says the lean shall terminate at the expiration of twenty years. But then, um, Paragraph C says that taxes may be collected and the lean may be enforced in the same manner as this Title Forty Four, Chapter Nine. When you actually go to Title Forty Four, Chapter Nine, um, there, Paragraph B says the lean shall terminate at the expiration of three years. So I just, just want to make sure that, uh, this is written in a, in a proper form and manner. And I, I just don't know if it's clear.
Yep. So what, what you have before you, forty four dash seven dash twenty eight is the, the actual state law on this. What's underlined is the amendment that's being proposed to the general law. And it's only as to enforcement and collection, not as to the expiration of the lean. That, that part of the statute is undisturbed.
Okay, so we can have two expirations essentially because this one is particular to.
Particular to.
The mobile home.
Mobile and manufactured.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Further discussion from members of the council? Hearing none, uh, Clerk please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the.
Moving on to Item Ten, Council President Communications, um, have a few updates this evening. Um, Item A, FEMA Flood Hazard Determination Letter. So, um, I had a letter sent to, uh, me in my capacity as chief elected official on January nineteenth notifying the town of our final flood hazard determination for our jurisdiction from FEMA. Uh, we got nervous because, um, last time that this was levied about six years ago, it meant that all the homes that were around Ty Oak Lake and Johnson's Pond and other bodies of water, we're going to see big premium increases in their insurance. Um, we had a call with, um, Senator Whitehouse and Congress and Magaziner's Offices on February twenty first. And then we had a call with the regional, uh, local FEMA office on February twenty fourth. We found out that is not the case. Um, in fact, there were some hazard zones that were rolled back. Um, it was determined that Johnson's Pond and Ty Oak Lake are not concluded in this map update. And in this map update was included Carbuncle Pond, Briggs Pond, Waterman Pond, Great Grass Pond and Whitford Pond, all of which have low hazard dams. Um, and they are being put in the special flood hazard area. Um, so we cleared all of that up, uh, with FEMA and our local office. So we aren't going to have, um, mass amounts of residents getting big premium spikes in flood insurance. The revised, um, flood hazard maps, um, I had given to the clerk to be stored with, uh, the planning office. Um, School Building Project Update, um, on March fourth, we had a meeting with Bond Counsel, the School Superintendent, School Committee Chair, the Architect and Legal Counsel, um, just to talk about, um, building a timeline backwards from a referendum date in the fall out until now. Um, we determined, we're looking at a tentative referendum target date of, I believe, October third. Um, we've lined that up and confirmed that with, um, the State Board of Elections, the Secretary of State's Office and the Local Board of Canvassers. We're following those deadlines closely. We're also confirming the financial estimates between the Bond Counsel and what they've tabulated, the Financial Advisor, the Architect and the Officers at Ride. Um, so that's being worked out as well offline. Um, the, our new Bond Counsel, uh, Taft McSally would like to have a workshop with the Town Council on, um, on, on this project specifically and our, and bonding with the town of Coventry altogether. Um, that we, to keep down on the number of meetings we're having, they did want a separate meeting. I had recommended they come and do this workshop after we cure the presentation on the school budget next week on March twenty first. That way we have members of the school department in the room, they can hear this presentation. Everybody will be on the same page in terms of financially what we're hearing. So that'll be from the, the Bond Counsel and I believe our financial advisor will be present on Zoom as well. Um, I had had a breakfast meeting with, uh, Director Robillard regarding human services a couple of weeks ago. Um, I'd been hearing, and I'm sure some of you have, about the growing issue of unhoused encampments in town. Um, it's, it's one of those things where, um, the, the, the best thing that we can do is, you know, I've, I've alerted Mister Robillard, uh, when I get, when I hear from residents about those who are, um, homeless and in encampments. Um, a lot of the time he'll deploy social workers to see if we can help them. Um, but the other thing that I'm told from police as well is, um, to notify them and they can go out and, um, have them move. Unfortunately, I know I've had some residents reach out about, um, finding shelter for them. Unfortunately, we don't have a shelter local enough. Um, it's tough to get a ride to shelters, whether it's Providence, whether it's Warwick, wherever it might be. Um, so that was the, the state of, of that discussion. Um, we discussed up, an upcoming opportunity this spring. Um, Director Robillard would like to do, um, uh, trauma informed training for town staff and elected officials. Um, I know that, um, Councilman Pasqua may have already done something like this in his capacity as a firefighter. Um, so that's on our radar. Um, one thing I just want to give a shout out to, Director Robillard is actually on the Governor's Task Force for Substance Abuse. So if you'll remember, we have that, those settlement funds related to the opioid issue from the pharmaceutical companies. He already pretty much has a plan on how that money should be spent. So that's something off of our plates where we don't have to really put in the brain power. He already has a, you know, a plan and strategy of how those funds should be best deployed into the community based on, um, the parameters around those funds. Um, and then, um, the last thing we talked about, um, which I thought was really interesting, we talked about with construction of these new schools. This is more of a shout out to School Building Committee and Councilmember Shockley is on that committee, um, talking about consideration of wellness spaces in our schools for any of the, with these renovations um, and how important that would be as well. So, um, we had a good chat, um, and I hope to do it more regularly. Um, uh, one thing from the last couple of years, and I'm sure you have all noticed it, is traffic issues. We hear a lot about speeding, stop signs, et cetera. Um, I've started looking into restarting the Traffic Calming Committee. Um, that committee was started probably over twelve years ago, um, and it went dormant maybe four or five years ago. That committee, um, consists of more staff than, than residents. Um, it's, takes two residents and a council member in addition to town staff. Um, so I know that traffic issues have been a big issue for a lot of our districts and I think that we need a more collaborative and efficient and formal process to address those issues. Um, so it needs one council member and two members of the community to run at full capacity, um, along with our town staff. So, um, if anyone's interested in helping to lift that off the ground, I'd appreciate outreach offline. Um, the, uh, myself and Vice President LeBlanc have been having regular leadership meetings with, um, Superintendent Cowart and the, uh, President, uh, the Chair and Vice Chair of the School Committee. Uh, we've met twice now, mostly the conversation has been on the FY twenty four budget. So we're not going into this blind, we have expectation. Um, we've been very collaborative with them. Um, we did have a discussion as well. We, um, we got a letter from Ride about the fact that the maintenance funds have not yet been spent this year. So we want to avoid the scoop. We were, had a conversation with them about places they should spend it. I'll get to that in a second. Um, The school budget will be discussed and presented on March twenty first, next Tuesday. Um, I did forward you a, um, an electronic PDF of the budget packet from Mister Cowart that we received, uh, late last week. So you have the opportunity to see that, but a formal hard copy binder will make its way to you probably with the, with the agendas, um, at the end of this week. Um, to that end, um, we were informed that there is an increasingly emergency issue with the onsite wastewater system at the high school. It's from what I'm told, pretty much non-functioning and we're having overflowing sewage issues. It's, from what I'm told, pretty much non-functioning, and we're having overflowing sewage issues. Um, so, um, I had connected, um, uh, Superintendent Cowart, the director of facilities, Russ Hill, with, uh, Fussin O'Neil, our sewer and wastewater contract, um, consultants. Um, Laura Markalini from Fussin O'Neil went out last week. And did a, a site walk of the, of the, um, onsite wastewater system. Um, she gave me a call, she said, this thing is not good, this is circa nineteen seventy-two, really outdated. Um, infrastructure, um, she was happy that we brought it to our attention because. That area is going to be included in the wastewater facilities plan that you will hear about at our next council meeting. Um, there's going to, there was another meeting held today between the assistant town manager, town staff, the school department, and Fussin O'Neil. Um, they've asked for an emergency meeting with, um, council leadership on Monday to discuss this. Um, it's apparently more, more urgent than we thought, so we'll keep you apprised of that as we learn more detail there. Um, next we have, um, I received in the mail, um, a letter from the US Department of Commerce, US Census Bureau. Uh, they requested we submit updates on our boundary information, this is important. So that way, um, when we get federal government allocations or anything like that related to. Health, welfare, infrastructure, education, anything that's federally funded, our information is up to date and accurate, so we can get them, the most. Most funding possible and most accurate allocation. Um, so this was completed on time, on deadline by our planning department, so that's all set. Um, the Ryan League of Cities and Towns, um, happy to share that Coventry now is representation on the board. Um, I, uh, joined the board for the first time last week. The main legislative priorities of the board this year, we only have the part-time legislative session, so we're working fast, but. Housing and land use, funding for transportation, infrastructure resiliency, workforce management, property taxes, fiscal restraint and financial successes. And education aid. For those who may not know, their annual convention is on March twenty-third at the Crown Plaza. That's free to all of us sitting up here at the table and to our staff as we're member communities. So feel free to go to their website and check that out. If you can stop by, I know it's during a workday. Um, check out the agenda that's posted on their website that I went last year, stopped by for a couple of hours and attended some sessions. Really, really helpful to learn what other communities are doing, um, and also get resources from experts on the things that we talk about all the time. And then lastly, the wastewater facilities plan, um, Fussin O'Neil said that they'll be ready to present their ninety percent plan, they call it. On March twenty-eighth on our council meeting docket. Um, Vice President LeBlanc and I had a preliminary call with them on March third to go over the results. Um, and what's, um, going to be the main basis of that plan, so we got a broad overview of what to expect. Um, and so, um, that plan is nearing completion, so. Um, we're going to see something that's close to a near finished, uh, product, um, to start on the twenty-eighth. Uh, I know that was a lot, um, but does anyone have any questions, comments? Vice President LeBlanc?
Uh, just a point of clar- clarification on Laura Markalini's time and when she did the walkthrough at the school's, uh, septic system. Uh, it was included in the, the wastewater facilities plan update, but if it, if it takes on additional legs and there's actually a project in the future, then it would be. Outside of that contract, just wanted to.
Yes, thank you for adding.
Additional expenses there. Um, but I did have a question for you on the, uh, traffic calming committee. Uh, could you just share what the role, the authority and the responsibilities of the committee is, just for anybody, uh, who might be interested?
Um, I don't have the description with me, but as I understand it, it's a committee, um, it didn't, I think it met every other month. Um, it has the planning director, chief of police, um, town engineer, uh, director of public works. Um, the town manager, and then a member of the council, two members of the public. And that was the committee that heard things, so anytime we've, I, you know, like I've mentioned, excuse me. Speeding on Rollinson Drive, uh, speeding on Ty Oak Ave, the need for speed signs near schools, the need for stop signs at intersections. Um, if those couldn't be remediated, um, at, you know, or it wasn't an easy decision to, you know, do a traffic study or something like that. That went through to this committee. Um, and this, it was just kind of a formal way of having all the minds related to traffic and road and safety. All in one place.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Pasqua?
Just want to comment on, uh, item C, uh, specifically trauma informed and the, uh, opioid plan. Uh, I want to thank you for doing that, trauma informs saves lives, and it's good that, um, you're doing that training with, with, uh, members of the town, that's, that's huge. So thank you for, for looking into doing that.
Any further discussion or questions? Alright, moving on to, um, Item twelve, council business matters carried over. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash two authorizing the town manager to allocate a sum of one point three million to Coventry, AKA Anthony Fire District. Central Coventry Fire District, Hopkins Hill Fire District, and Western Coventry Fire District, and the town of Coventry's American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds.
Point of order.
Councilman Pasqua?
I'm going to recuse myself, uh, from this agenda item due to my employment with the Coventry Fire District.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please ensure that, uh, Councilmember Pasqua fills out the, uh, recusal form, or conflict of interest. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilmember Shockley, discussion. Vice President LeBlanc?
I do have two amendments to the motion. Uh, the first one is, uh, row six says authorizing the town manager, I think we need to say interim town manager. Uh, and then on row forty-six, it has a date of January twentieth, twenty twenty-two, I think that needs to be changed to March fifteenth of twenty twenty-three. I also would, uh, Today fourteen, but I was just giving them a date because the bank's closed. Um, so I was thinking, uh, we could say via check and or wire, since this is large, large sums of money.
Is that a formal motion?
Yes, so I'll make that motion.
Uh, we have a motion to amend the resolution to, uh, say in line thirty-six, grant onto the interim town manager. And on line forty-six, changing the date to March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I hear a second?
And via, uh, check and or wire.
Check and or wire.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Shockley, any discussion on the amendments? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four and the affirmative, zero and the negative.
And we're back to the main motion. Councilmember Shockley? Discussion, yep.
When we were last, um, I was looking for feedback that we'd received from both Councilmember Ludwig. Um, and from Chief Brown, uh, Kurt.
I have both of those numbers if you want them.
Uh, Great, if we could just get them out loud so that people can, yep, hear.
So the numbers we discussed last time, based on the number of a total allocation of one point three million. Uh, we had for Central Coventry Fire District, six hundred thousand, Western Coventry Fire District, one hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. Hopkins Hill, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. Anthony, three, or AKA Coventry, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight. So that was a total of one point three million. I then did the math based on, um, Counselor Ludwig, who had mentioned the one million number. Um, no? Not, okay, so those are the numbers, um, if you need me to repeat them.
Um, if you wouldn't mind one more time, just to make sure I got them down correctly.
CCFD, six hundred thousand, Western, one hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and sixty. Hopkins Hill, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven oh two, Anthony, three forty-seven, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight. So those are the numbers. Council Ludwig?
So, um, in, in the session in January that, um, we were talking about this last. Um, I had mentioned a number of one point three million that I thought the number was. Um, that the motor vehicle tax had been reduced to the town of Coventry. Um, but I went back and I actually took a look at specifically what the number was. So I know we've talked about it a couple of times, but, um, if anyone is specifically interested. Um, back in the town council meeting, June twenty-eighth, uh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, we were reviewing the, um, the bullets on the pages of the monthly readouts from the then finance director. And she had specifically called out one point one million, um, that we had not received, um, back for motor vehicle tax. So it about, if you look at the video on YouTube, it's about twenty minutes in, and for a few minutes, uh, we, I basically asked her. Why, why did they not remit the one point one million dollars back? Um, and to paraphrase, she basically said, uh, this was true not just for Coventry, but for every city and town across the state. Um, they dramatically, the state dramatically reduced the motor vehicle reimbursement. Um, so the town as a whole, in essence, had to make up for that originally budgeted one point one that we thought we were getting in from that motor vehicle tax. So that, that was a pretty big number for us not to get. It's around the same time that we first started getting some of the ARPA funding in. I think at that point, we had started getting in about, um, two million and change in actual cash, but had been promised numbers around the ten million mark. And so, um, So the town as a whole, while we're being written, written, uh, uh, checks that are coming in. For the approximately ten point four million dollars total in ARPA. In reality, we're taking hits in other locations such as the motor vehicle tax. And so I know, for example, um, overall, the state is trying to get rid of the motor vehicle tax, we weren't, we didn't have to pay one for last year. Um, so for example, in June, so about a year after that conversation in June of twenty twenty-two. When the state found, um, surplus funds, they actually completely eliminated the motor vehicle tax a year ahead of schedule. So, um, So the money's got to come from somewhere, you can't just eliminate the, that money and then, you know, um, we have the same services or things that we use that for in the past. So the reasoning, um, that I was using for the conversation was somewhat similar to what I'm saying now, in essence. We were, um, cut several checks in the total of approximately ten point four million dollars. But the town as a whole suffered on things like the motor vehicle tax not receiving in the one point one million. So if I were to take a look at that number and just say net-net, the town as a whole. Uh, received approximately, uh, one point one million less than the, than the cash sent in on the ARPA funds as a, as a net number. Um, and I take a look at that as a percentage. So for example, it, the, the original motion here is for approximately twelve point six. Um, uh, pardon me, twelve point five percent of the total ARPA funds, which totals the one point three million in the original motion. If I take a look at just a simple calculation, I, I'm not trying to split hairs, just a simple calculation. That in a net position would put us, instead of ten point four million, really, we had to make up those. And so we approximately got, uh, one point one million less, so that's about nine point three million to the town as a whole. Then that would, um, slightly reduce the original motion of one point three million. Uh, by a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, just to make up for the fact that the town took a hit. Um, so I did want to, uh, did want to see what others thought about that. Um, I am in agreement with, uh, the allocation percentages that were put forward before. So, uh, in terms of the town as a whole, with the slight reduction of that one thirty-seven, five hundred. Uh, that would mean, uh, distribution total. Instead of the one point three original motion, it would be one million, one hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred. And so it would still be the breakdown in allocation percentages that Counselor Shockley mentioned before, so. My understanding of the percentages were Central Coventry, forty-six percent, Anthony, twenty-seven percent. Hopkins Hill, seventeen percent, and Western Coventry at ten percent. So I did a simple calculation on that versus, um, the one million, one sixty-two, five hundred. And the numbers are, are just slightly less than what were read before, so that would be five thirty-six, five thirty-eight. And forty-six cents for Central Coventry. In Anthony, it would be three ten, six eighty-nine, seventy-five. In Hopkins Hill, it would be one ninety-eight, two fifty-two, seventy-five. And in Western, that would work out to one seventeen, zero, one nine, spot oh four, for a total of one million, one sixty-two, five hundred. That's why I asked you not to read the one million before, because I, I went back to watching the exact number amount. So I, I understand, it does nothing against fire departments, I totally understand that everybody's got hit, money has to come from somewhere. The town as a whole took a major hit with that one point one million that didn't come in on the motor vehicle tax. It was actually really surprising, um, I know we weren't the only town that suffered from that, that was across the state. Um, so while individual citizens, admittedly, I didn't have to pay a motor vehicle tax, um, over the last year. The town as a whole has had to figure out how to make that money up, so that's, uh, a hundred thirty-seven, five hundred less than the one point three in original motion. Which basically means we could pick up additional townwide projects that were put through in the ARPA list. Um, you know, and complete them to full, full completion for some of the projects that were put in front of us. Um, so I, I did want to ask the other counselors what, um, what you thought about that as a, as a simple calculation. Um, I, I'm not looking to throw motions out there and just have everybody say yes, or everybody say no, I'm just trying to see if it's something reasonable. Do you understand my math and what, what we're still in favor of? Because I, personally, I would like to see a unanimous decision at the end of the day on this, because it's so large, and ultimately, I think we all have the same goal. Thank you.
Discussion for members of the council? Councilmember Shockley?
Um, just to refresh, with the one point three million, was that a percentage of the ten point four? Um, because I definitely see Counselor Ludwig's point, while we're trying to allocate ten point four million, we've already. Been forced to allocate one point one of it to whatever we had to make up from a motor vehicle tax. So the state basically decided to keep it, instead of making do on what it said it was going to give for, uh, um, basically a makeup for the fact that they were reducing the automobile tax. They just decided, the town's got extra money, so we're not going to give them that. But the town had an expectation of tax funds, so just to go back to my original question, um, On, just aside from that, was the one point three million originally put forward as a percentage of the ten point four? Or was the one point three million taken from a different?
I believe it was the ten point four.
I don't. Unlike the other funds we got from ARPA. We're not allowed to allocate that one point one, that's an actual loss. So I, it is something to think about, I think, that we had an expectation of funds coming in from the state and they didn't come.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Well, I understand the point, uh, of lost money, totally, totally get that. Um, there's also, that's like one item that happened that year. Um, that's the same year, I believe, um, because there's a settlement agreement, uh, with WED and the town, where the town got eight hundred and two thousand. So that technically would offset, I would say, the majority of that million that we lost. So I, I mean, uh, it's a, it's a point in time, it's one case where the town lost, but there's other times where the town won. There's impact fees that aren't included in our budget, um, that, I mean, if, is a ton of development in, in any given year, we're going to get more money than we thought we were. Um, so, I, I, I go back to what I first said, um, the whole reason why we got these funds. Is because of the, the first responders, and, um, I really believe our first large chunk. Out of these funds should go to the fire and EMS. Um, I, I am against reducing, um, these funds, uh, to them. Um, but I just wanted to call out that, that eight hundred and two essentially almost offset the full million. The date here is October eighth of twenty twenty, when it was posted to the Coventry's website, so that would be the fiscal year of seven one twenty through six thirty, twenty twenty-one.
Any further discussion? Um, I would tend to agree with Vice President LeBlanc, um, I personally like to keep it at the one point three, again, to echo the sentiment. Um, it's one of the things highlighted as one of the main four bullets we saw from, um, the Ryan Public Expenditure Council of how these funds should be spent. Um, and, uh, I just, I, I just would prefer to keep it at the amounts we had, um, that we articulated when we started conversation. Um, that being said, yep, Councilmember Shockley?
Uh, no, and as you can see, I'm not that firm either way, but I do think that if the fire departments were a part of the town of Coventry. Then in the way the police did, they would have received a certain percentage of the funds anyway. They just happened to fall outside our purview.
Can I make a motion if discussion is over?
Yes. Motion to amend?
Motion to amend that the amount on line 41 for Central Coventry Fire District be amended to $600,000. The amount on line 42 for Coventry or Anthony Fire District be amended to $347,438. The amount on line 43 for Hopkins Hill Fire District be amended to 221,202. 702. 702. And the amount on line 44 for Western Coventry Fire District be amended to 130,860.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second from Counselor Ludwig, discussion on the amendments. Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four and the affirmative, zero and the negative.
We now go back to the main motion. It will be approving the resolution as amended. Do we have any discussion? Vice President LeBlanc?
I don't know how much it matters, but I at least want to call it out. On row 36, it says town manager. I think we need to throw an interim in there as well.
Oh, that was the one I picked before.
Oh, I, there's also six up top.
Okay.
So just wanted to call it out.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment. Any further discussion? This is on the motion to approve the resolution as amended. Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four and the affirmative, zero and the negative.
Can someone just bring back in Counselor Pascal? Thank you. We'll now move on to public comment for undocketed items. Are there any members of the public who'd like to make a public comment here this evening in council chambers? Looking to Zoom, anyone on Zoom like to make a public comment on undocketed items? Going once, going twice, three times, public comment is now closed. Now move on to executive or closed session items. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session for the following? Executive or closed session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section 42-46-5A2, relitigation involving Social Holdings LLC and the Town of Coventry in CA, number KC-2020-0769, and executive or closed session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section 42-46-5A2, re-employment contract for the incoming town manager, Daniel Perillo.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Counselor Pascal. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pascal?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five and the affirmative, zero and the negative.
Hold him in. Oh my God.
Can I have a motion to come out of executive session?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilmember Shockley. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes. Can I have a motion to steal the minutes of executive session?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilmember Pasqua. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen of the public, the council met in executive session to discuss two items. Item A, executive or closed session pursuant to Rhode Island general law section forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two, re-litigation involving social holdings LLC in the town of Coventry in CA number KC dash twenty twenty dash zero seven six nine. And item B, executive or closed session pursuant to Rhode Island general law section forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two, re-employment contract for the incoming town manager, Daniel Perillo. Discussion was had, no votes were taken. Do I have a motion to adjourn the town council meeting at nine forty-five PM?
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second from Councilmember Shockley.